I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody in the audience and those watching via the television. At this time, we'll have roll call showing every member present except for Mayor Leach, and we wish him well and send our prayers and thoughts with him. We'll have the invocation by Councilman Alsop and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Hatch. If you'd like to stand and join us, please do so.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for today. We just thank you for putting this council together. We just ask that your blessings be on each one of us tonight. We ask that you guide us and direct us in the things that has to be done in the city, that we will be able to do it to the best of our ability, guide us and direct us. We just ask that you continue with the moisture that we've had during the winter time, and we need some more to keep everything's going. We ask the wind to be calm, and we just ask that you let this town flourish in the way that only you can do, Lord. So we just ask that you also be with the Department, the Police Department, all the Air Force Marines, Army, Navy, Horse Guard. Just be with everybody that's out there that's away from their parent, their family. We just ask you to give them a safe trip home, guide them and direct them. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Councilman Alsop and Councilman Hatch for that. This time, we have called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the City Council as a whole and not to any person, individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council cannot discuss or act on items presented at this time. At the conclusion of Call to the Public, individual council members may, one, respond to criticism made by those who have spoken; two, ask staff to review a matter; and, three, ask that the matter be put on a future agenda. I have two forms filled out. We'll start with Mr. Doug Roberts. You could come forward, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Doug Roberts, and I live at 1441 North 36th Drive in Sholo. And thank you, Vice Mayor, for allowing us to address. We had our car show on Saturday, and we had our motorcade the night before on Friday. And we had fantastic participation and wonderful, beyond wonderful, support from all of our community. And in particular, I wanted to come before you tonight and express our deepest, deepest thanks to the city in general. But in particular, we noticed exemplary service on the behalf of the city through the Public Works crew run by the council. And I've seen them over the last year or so, just work their hearts out. And no matter what we asked them to do, and things always change at the last minute, there's always something that comes up. Yeah, sure, we can do that. And they took care of it, and it was accomplished. I have nothing but good words to say for our employees of the city as a whole, for the Public Works crew in particular. They had multiple events going tonight. This weekend, we had our event, they had a bike rally. And ever since that beautiful splash pad's been put in, there's been a lot of excess maintenance and increased maintenance and things that need to be addressed there, and they have handled it. And it was great. At our car show, Mayor Leach showed up, and he got to choose his mayor's car. He chose a 1914 Model T Speedster because it just called out to him. And that was the winner of the Mayor's Award. And we just, everybody has been supportive, from general management on down, Parks and Rec. The Police Department helped us with our motorcade on Friday. We've got nothing but yes, 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 support, support, support. And it's been fantastic, and I want to make sure that the community knows that we have this kind of a government. In addition, we have community support from, big, big support from all of our community vendors and merchants. Hatch Toyota put on the Burger Boon, that cost them a lot of money, and they did that very well. It was wonderful. We got Snowflake Smokehouse Burgers, which were the best in the world just about. So everything is fantastic. And, you know, we had a large amount of donations that we were able to silent auction. We had more donations that we were able to raffle, and we had more donations that we were able to give away as store prices. We estimate that we raised for our local Salvation Army office approximately $15,000. And that money, every dollar of it, stays here on the mountain and helps our local community members who are in need when a house burns down or somebody gets flooded out, or when there's, you know, whatever issues come up, they're there to help. And this car show was fun, and it provided a good service to the community. And we cannot thank the city enough for their support and all of the community. So thank you very much.
Before you get away, I'd like to say thank you, you, for your efforts, all the work that you put into organizing what you did.
It takes a little bit of work. We can always use more volunteers. Councilman Hatch, two of his little Porsche in our little motorcade, and it was really nice to have him there.
The next request is from Ravon Bowers.
I'm Ravon Bowens. I live at 560 South Creekside Drive in Sholo Bluff. I'm here tonight to express concern from our community. We have 54 homes so far about the Sholo Bluff project. We were informed last year from our developer and engineer that the Sholo Bluff project was moving ahead with a recreation center in the south end of Sholo Bluff, which used to be Adams Park. Our concern then was that the access, we were told, would come across Sholo Creek, come up Wolford Road, and not extend onto Penrod. We did not want that to happen because the only way out of Sholo Bluff then would be to come through our neighborhood and get out. We just had the latest annual, and we're told from the engineer that the plans have been approved, and significant construction is going to start in the area. Another concern is the Arizona Site Steward Program is trying to protect Arizona artists in that area. And we know from the engineer, in his own words, "I'm concerned that whatever you're going to do is going to have repercussions on future development that's already planned and approved in the area." I'd just like to leave these two pieces of some data research. We try the best that we can. We're not in HOA, we don't have any control of the development. We did see in the capital improvement plan that there's 1.7 million for the Wolford reconstruction. We don't know what that is, and there's 20 million going for Scott Ranch Road. I know there's a need in the community to get across from White Mountain to Penrod. We do it at Wolford Road. It's only 1.6 miles down, leaving 5.7 to the intersection. Scott Ranch Road pretty much cuts it in half. You don't have to climb a bluff, you don't have to cross a high creek. And the turn coming up and around Wolford Road would be a 90-degree turn at a 13. I know the dam is there. That's already taken care of the creek problem, but the dam's in pretty poor shape. I think mostly we're looking to find out where we can get information that our developer and our engineer refuses to give us. And if there's any input at this late date that we could give as a community, we would appreciate it.
We'll have staff get with you. Is there any others wanting to speak under call? Seeing nobody move, we'll close call to the public and move to special events. First, I am on special events, is presentation of outgoing board member, Rob Turnwall from Sholo Main Street. We'll turn that over to Jay Brimhall. And I particularly would like to thank Rob for his many, many years of service to the city of Sholo Main Street, Chamber of Commerce, just the myriad of different programs that you've helped with is just amazing. And we have Jay here.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. It's a, it's a pleasure, well, kind of a pleasure and kind of not a pleasure, to introduce Mr. Turnwall after his resignation as president of Sholo Main Street. I got to work with Rob for about three years, and it's been an honor and a pleasure. And I think the most important thing that's come out of it personally for me is that I can call him a friend. And his organizational skills with Sholo Main Street have been exemplary. And, you know, the next president of Sholo Main Street, Brian Martin, is here. He's spoken offline, and realizes what big shoes he has to fill. So just a little bit about Rob. He's been in the area for quite a long time, and in his service, he's been very gracious with his service to several different organizations on the mountain, namely Sholo Main Street and the Safe House and the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, he's done a lot. He's done a lot of... Again, Rob, a pleasure. Thank you so much for your service. We have something for you.
Gratitude. Thank you for your 15-plus years of dedicated service.
Hit that man.
I've really just had a lot of fun. And you can be tired when you come home from having fun, too. But I'll be brief, which is, if you know me, that's hard to do. When Sandy, my wife, and I were talking about retiring, we happened to be in Lake Havasu at the time. I had transferred with J.C. Penney there. And it's like, what are we going to do? We don't want to live here. And it took about five minutes to realize, we want to be here. This is where all of our adult friends are. I mean, I have high school friends there in South Dakota. But when I look around the room, I know a lot of you folks, and I've had a lot of fun here. And it's, you know, beautiful country, we all know that. But it's the people you surround yourself with, which can really improve your life. And I've, we've had a great life here, and this is where we're planning on staying. So thank you very much. Thank you, Sholo. You guys, to follow what the first gentleman said, you guys have been great, really have. The city of Sholo, and we're just very pleased to, or I'm very pleased to have been able to help in a lot of different ways. But like I said, it was a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun, too. Thank you so much.
Hey, Rob, don't leave yet. I would, I've been with Rob for probably 10, 10 and a half, 11 years on Main Street. And if you see the Wayfinder signs, Rob had a lot to do with the Wayfinder signs. If you look at the wall here on Ninth Street and Dusa Clubs, Rob had a lot to do with that. 2019 and the COVID, Rob and Meals and Wheels, and the city got together, and we gave away 500 free turkeys to the people here in Sholo that needed some food for Thanksgiving, and Rob was a part of that. There's a lot of different major items and major successes that Rob has been involved in the last 12 years, probably, inside Main Street. It's just been my honor and privilege to work with you in all those years, to be a liaison from Meals and, or Main Street to the council. And the farmer's market, that's another main thing that Rob has been involved in. And that's, a lot of this stuff is continuing. It's not just because Rob's leaving. Brian's got a lot of shoes to fill, and a lot more new things will be coming up. Everything, and also the Police Memorial out front, Main Street, donated $10,000 to that, and Rob was a part of that. So he's, he might be not there, but he has definitely contributed a lot to the city of Sholo. So I want to thank you for your time and effort.
We'll move on to the next item. We have a presentation on wildlife preparedness, and we have Katrina Jenkins and Randy Chevalier here, and Chief Provost. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. I appreciate your time this evening on your agenda so that I can talk to you a little bit about what the wildfire season outlook looks like. As you can see by the title, everyone plays a part in this. So bear with me while I get through this. So to start, it's shaping up pretty good. We had a great winter. We've had a wonderful spring. We've had some moisture. You can look around in the meadows and everything as you're coming up here, and it's, we're in the greenup. And I'm sure Chief Chevalier, when he, there you are. I lost him. When he gets up here, he'll talk more about the ERCs and the wildfire fuels and all of that. So I don't want to steal his thunder, but it looks really good right now. But we have to stay on top of our toes. So I don't want everybody to get too confident. And I'm going to go into a little bit more about what we look at. One of the first things that we examine every week is drought. This is the pictures for short-term drought in Arizona as it currently stands. The one in the back, where you see hardly any coloring, is our current status. This is about a week old, but that's still about, is still really accurate. The one in the forefront is actually last year's. And as you can see, there is a lot more color on that map than there is this year, meaning there was a much more serious short-term drought last year. But this year, because of all the moisture we had over the winter, even last year's monsoons, this spring, we're looking a lot better. Like I said, I don't want everybody to get too overly confident. As we go through fire season, I hate to say that part, but fire season isn't just a season anymore. It is a year-round threat. But in particular, there's a few months that we're even on more heightened alert than usual. Usually, April is when we kind of start looking at it. As you can see by these maps, May, June, again, there's no scary red colors on there, which is really unusual for us. The state of Arizona usually, by June especially, is almost all red. And as you can see, there's no red in June. This is just the outlooks, but hey, we'll take it. July, we're, again, July is when we get to that monsoon season, that magical, wonderful rain that we get every year. Still no red in Arizona. This is going to be one of those exception years where we don't see the craziness, we hope. And I say that, and I stress that, we hope, because everybody has a piece of that pie that it's all of our responsibility to make sure that we don't have a catastrophic wildfire. Just because the outlooks look good and drought looks good doesn't mean we're off scot-free. So what does that mean? All of this information, like I said, we've got to stay on our toes. We've got to stay vigilant. We live in a wildland-urban interface, meaning we all live adjacent to the forests, or next to, or in, around. There's trees everywhere. So being in a wildland-urban interface, we have to become adapted to living in that wildland-urban interface. We have to be good stewards of our land. That goes for our visitors as well as our local residents. We hear every year, those rules don't apply to me. I live here. On the flip side, we do hear quite often, those rules don't apply to me. I don't live. But the truth is, it's everyone's responsibility, whether you live here or you're just visiting. Part of those responsibilities is to know before you go. A lot of our residents do go and recreate in our forests, and we encourage our visitors to come do the same. It's a great time to do it. But understanding what, if there are restrictions in place, which right now, we are not in restrictions, but there's ways to find that out. And also checking the weather. Make sure that we're not going to be in a flood situation. We don't want your tent floating downstream. Those that do recreate, particularly the camping experience, please make sure you put out your campfires each and every time. Do not leave that fire unattended. It's your fire, your responsibility. I preach this unceasingly. My staff is so sick of me saying that, but it's the truth. Everyone has to be responsible for what they pack in, what they, they have to pack it out. They have a campfire, they have to put it out. Mother Nature is not your maid. Please put out those fires. Don't leave it up to somebody else. All right, so I'll get off my soapbox a little bit and get on to kind of what we do in this neck of the woods, so to speak. So both before fire season starts and after fire season starts, emergency management in both Apache County and Navajo County get together along with all of our partners, Fire Forest Service, both state and federal, BLM, our BIA Fort Apache teams, our local teams, both law enforcement and fire, all get together, and we talk about what's coming up, what it looks like. But then afterwards, we talk about what did go well? What do we need to work on next year? So we continue to engage with each other, and that's why when something unforeseen does happen, hopefully not too soon, knock on wood, our teams are able to work together quickly, efficiently, and effectively. We share weekly updates with our stakeholders on the decision-making from our White Mountain Fire Coordination Group. We do print, social media, radio, anything we can do to get the word out. We're going to put that communication out there to the public as far and wide as we can, including to our Valley Media outlets when it's possible. And then if we do happen to have a wildfire that breaks out, we will use what we call a trap line, which is basically a fancy term for a huge list of phone numbers, contacts, stores, businesses, you name it, chambers of commerce, everybody that we can get ahold of to get that information blasted out. Also use that when we're in restrictions, just so we can get that information spread as far and wide as possible. Yeah, not to worry, we're not in restrictions right now. But we do look at that on a weekly basis. So how do we come to our decision-making on restrictions? We look at a lot. We get reports from our Forest Service experts. We have subject matter experts that actually go out and do tests on the fuels, make sure what's going on there, what they're reacting to, how they're behaving. And I'll let Chief talk about that. He's better at it than I am. We have our Weather Service friends from Black Staff give a report on what's currently happening, but also the seven to 10 days out, what they're seeing, if there's going to be a red flag warning or, you know, a dry-out spell, whatever it looks like. And right now, we're in this really strange-looking sort of monsunal pattern, but we're not in monsoon season. I wish we were. We have our local safety officials that participate so that we get that boots on the ground locally inside the city, but also in the forest. So we have a big picture, then we also have our regional partners from State Forestry, BLM, BIA Fort Apache, and then the two county emergency management teams also provide input. We do this on a weekly basis. It's a phone call. We evaluate all the criteria, like I said, ERCs, what the resources look like, meaning how much firefighting power do we have up here? Or how easy is it to get here if it's not already here? Do our resources thin out? Are our guys going out on assignments so that we don't have as many of our guys here? We look at public events. You just heard about the car show. That brought a lot of people up here. We're going to look at that, because that's an influx of people, and how is that going to help or hurt his evacuation response if that's needed? What did I forget? I just totally went blank. ERCs, like I said, we look at a lot. So it's not just my gut feeling, political pressure from someone saying, "I think we need to do this." It is based on scientific data every week that we look at. Here's a quick snapshot of the logos that you'll see on our team. This is a group effort. It is no one person making decisions and no one agency dictating to the others. So I just like to show this one. The next part is ready, set, go. And I like to talk about this in conjunction with wildfire because we've had those catastrophic fires happen. As we all know, rodeo, Cheddis guy, it's been over 20 years. But it's not a matter of if, unfortunately. It is a matter of when, when we have our next fire. And how big it gets, we don't know. But we want our citizens to be prepared for those unfortunate incidents, whether it's fire, or flood, or anything else. And yes, we do have tornadoes in Navajo County. They're not big, but they happen. So to be ready, we encourage everyone that lives up here to have a kit, whether it's a 72-hour kit, 10 days, even better. Make sure you have enough food, water, prescription meds, important documents for you, your family, your pets, big one, all in that kit and ready to rock and roll if we call you and say, get set. And I'll talk about that here in a second. Sign up for the alert system. Navajo County has an alert system called Ready Navajo County. You can find that on our webpage at www.navajacountyaz.gov/ready. I know that's long, but if you Google it, it should pop up. Navajo County's had this in place for many years. We do not sell the information. It is maintained safe and sacred with me. We don't send out community event alerts. You're not going to get the latest greatest bake sale, sorry. It is kept sacred and holy for emergencies. So you know that when you get that call from that system, it's time to pay attention. Next up, we'd like people to prepare your home, create that defensible space so that if his team or any of the other firefighting teams out there have to come out to your property, they can take one look at it and say, yep, we can take care of that home. Whereas the next-door neighbor that hasn't taken care of their home, created that defensible space, may not be so lucky. We ask that our citizens check on each other. Talk to your neighbors. Extend that hand over the fence, be friendly. Say, hey, do you need help breaking up some pine needles one weekend a month or something? Because some of our elderly friends and neighbors may not have the mobility to do that for themselves. So extend that lending hand, and let's keep our community safe. And finally, have a plan for you, your family, and again, if you can, your pets, livestock, whatever you have. Don't forget that goldfish. So get set. Get set means you've heard something's going on, whether you've heard it through our alert system, hopefully, or through the radio, your next-door neighbor, social media, whatever source. source you go to, hopefully it's one of our vetted sources. Um, you take that kit that you've packed already and you move it either to the door or even better to your car. We want you to listen to, to updates through our vetted resources, whether it's Timbermesa's Facebook page, the Sholo PD or City of Sholo Facebook page, my Facebook page, 311info.net is another website where we post a lot of updates and these are all official sources. We're getting this information from these guys. It's not a rumor. It's not supposition that somehow turned into fact. We don't know how that happens, but it does. Um, it is actual information. If you have a special need such as livestock or mobility issues or health issues and concerns, you may want to consider leaving early. This is, you know, to avoid getting you confused and upset because when we get that go mode, we get into panic mode a little bit too. Our brains don't always work just so. Um, so take that extra time and leave early. Get out of the area, go north or go west or go south, but just get out of the area if you can. Um, and again, if you have livestock, we encourage you to work with your, your neighbors, get a plan together. I just talked to someone last weekend at the Leave No Trace event and she actually has a plan to have people come in with their trailers, their friends, load up her animals and get them out early. And I was like, yes, this is why I do my job. Cause somebody made the, that plan early so they know what they're doing. All right. Last but not least, go. Go means go. Don't wait. Don't think that we're going to get another chance to send that go message. We might, we might not. We might not even get to set. It may go straight from ready to go. And that's important for people to realize that's why we want everybody ready 24/7, 365, so that if we do hit that go message, it's go. Um, if we do do a go message and you decide to ignore that evacuation order and stay on your property, that is exactly what you will be required to do. Stay on your property. You won't be allowed to go check on your neighbor's dogs, cats, goldfish, horses, any, you don't get to go get prescriptions, groceries, nothing. You have to be prepared to spend for yourself for the duration. If you're caught off of your property, these fine gentlemen will have you escorted out of the evacuation zone, just for your safety and theirs. Um, and know that if you choose to ignore the evacuation order, you may not get services such as EMS, fire or law enforcement. They are going to be busy dealing with an emergency and you had that opportunity to leave, so we ask that everybody take that time and go ahead and go. Last but not least, follow those instructions from our public safety friends. They may be different routes that you're used to traveling that they're going to direct you down. So while we do plan for evacuations, not all emergencies are equal. So the fire may start in a different area than what we were expecting and you may have to go around a different way. So make sure you're listening to those instructions. We will put as much out as possible, as fast as possible and as accurately as possible. Sometimes it's not the quickest, but we want to make sure it's the most accurate information out there. So with that, now I get to stop talking at you and turn it over to one of these gentlemen. I'll let them flip for it and they can go.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing us to say a few words. Um, the weather we're having is absolutely beautiful. I, I can't remember, um, too far back of my adult career, 26 years on the fire service, where we've seen a summer like this, more towards our childhood, growing up here was kind of like this, which is a little bit frightening to me, honestly, uh, cause the snow, the rain, the beautiful, almost like monsoons that we're having is helping that grass grow a little bit taller. What I know about grass though, is we call it a fuel. It's fine fuel. Uh, that means, uh, as soon as the sunlight is actively on it for a, a good amount of time and the wind that we saw today, uh, blowing on that, that means it's going to dry out really fast. And so I, I worry about a season like this, thinking about the community is going to maybe get a little bit complacent. Over the last 26 years, we've been preaching, uh, fire wise, uh, the rodeo Cheddis guy helped us with that, you know, we saw the impact of what that could do to a community and a lot of people remember that. Well, now with the moisture, uh, they might be more apt to want to have that barbecue in the backyard or do the burning that they want to do, which we promote and support, but it has to be done appropriately. So I worry about this, this fine fuel, having those backyard barbecue fires, having the, the burn permit, uh, fire and then not thinking about where that ember cast is going and how quickly it can get in that grass and spread to somebody's house. And that's how wildfire is going to get up and start moving through the canopy. Um, initially we might not have to worry about the canopy, but it's, it's those close neighborhoods. It's that fire getting on that back porch after it gets up in the grass, then it gets up into the eve and then that ember cast goes to the next house and to the next house. So even though we saw some awesome, uh, images of, we're, we're really not in a drought this year, um, all indications so show that we're, we're in a pretty good fire, you know, season from a perspective of moisture on the ground, but I, I don't want to, uh, don't want to cry wolf necessarily either, but I don't want to get complacent. Oh, I think we still have a fire risk. As we get closer to the middle of June, we'll see what actually happens with the monsoon season. Hopefully it comes as advertised. They're talking about it may be a stronger El Nino pattern. Hopefully that happens and, and we won't be talking about wildfire for a while, but I just kind of want to get that message across of please don't get complacent. We're ready to respond, of course. A lot of our resources, um, they're not out on wildfires right now because there's just not that much of an impact to the state or around the country. Um, but that could change at any, at any given time. Now is a good time to start getting prepared though. Uh, all season long is a good time, uh, right? There's, there's a lot of opportunity. If you're curious about fire wise, feel free to go to our website, uh, timbermesafire.org, give us a call. We can send somebody out to your property. We can help do assessments on your property, on, on ways you can help clean it up, how you can treat it, give you suggestions where you can haul off material or, or how to burn it appropriately with a burn permit. Um, and then with that, July 15th is a, a fire wise block party. It'll be, um, in Blue Ridge, uh, from Pintop Lakeside at the Blue Ridge Elementary School on, on July 15th. So I'd encourage all the residents of the city of Sholo, Linden, Pintop Lakeside to join us at the block party and we can kind of help educate a little bit further on, uh, on, on ways to protect your property. Uh, so again, thank you, and I'd love to answer any questions that you, that you may Thank you.
Mayor and council, good evening and thank you for giving us a few minutes to talk about this. As most of you know, you've been up here for a number of years and we've had a number of incidents from the rodeo Cheddis Sky Fire, the, the Wallow Fire, the Cedar Fire, a number of other events. The thing with those is we have learned a lot of lessons over the years. If you look over just the last 10 years, the way we do business today is much different. You know, it's no longer the city of Sholo or the, the town of Pintop Lakeside or Navajo County. It's the White Mountain community and we work together and coordinate together so that when we have these issues, we're responding as one group and with a joint effort. And I guess what I want to share with the public is when the councilman, uh, council or board of supervisors, uh, comes out with fire restrictions or other restrictions, understand there's a lot of work and research and time that has gone behind that decision. It's not just made, uh, because somebody thinks that, you know, we should be in restrictions. There's a lot of work behind that. So we are in better condition this year, but please, you know, be safe. Uh, we still are having, uh, fires left unattended out there in the woods. Um, you know, people throwing cigarettes out of their cars. You know, we still have a fire danger out there, so do be careful. And, you know, we will continue working together to mitigate those, those issues, but, uh, we just want the public to know we are working together and, and preparing for any eventualities. Thank you.
Thank you all for your, um, work and all your departments work and I agree and keep the, uh, public aware and.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to echo what Chief Chevalier, Chevalier said, and I'll kind of share a story. My wife and I, we were out of town last week and we've enjoyed the beautiful, uh, desert flowers, the wildflowers that have been growing, especially down, um, between, you know, Payson and Fort McDowell. Um, there's a lot of beautiful colors and stuff like that. And then, and each time we've traveled, we've seen these different flowers kind of pop up, like at one point it's all yellow and then purple and orange. And so we were coming back, uh, on Saturday and we were kind of looking off. We saw at one point there were some beautiful flowers and we look off in this hill and I'm like, oh, I wonder what those flowers are. They're very bright red. I was like, oh, that's beautiful. It was fire retardant. So it wasn't flowers at all. Uh, there had been a fire that had broke out. It looked like someone with a, you know, one of the things is a, a people dragging chains, not being cognizant of the, you know, that there's stuff, uh, hanging off of their trailer and, uh, a fire had broke out. And I mean, it was probably only about five or six acres. And fortunately they brought air support in and they had dropped fire retardant there. But it was something that, you know, my wife and I were kind of, you know, shocked and we've lived in, in the White Mountains almost our entire adult life. And, and well, actually we're both born here, but we, you know, you, you start to think, oh, we've had so much moisture, it's not a problem. And down there, they probably haven't got as much as the moisture we did in the last few weeks. And so the sun's sitting there like, uh, Chief Chevalier was saying, and just beating on those, uh, fine fuels has caused that. And it, and I mean, one spark started doing that, um, that fire and it, uh, it, it got out of hand a little bit, within just a little bit of time, it burned several acres. And, um, and so that danger is very real. And so, um, all it takes is a few weeks of, of us having these high winds, dries out the area and then us not having the, um, the moisture that we've been fortunate to have. Um, and then another thing I'd like to say is just, I want to, uh, you know, kind of, um, tell Kat, I really appreciate what she does. Uh, most people don't know Kat on a, a personal level. Um, I'm fortunate enough to do so. I know her and her husband, Dalton. Dalton's the individual who cleans our city gym every Monday, uh, without fail. Uh, he broke both of his wrists at one point and within, as soon as him, him coming back to work, he was in cleaning the city gym. And I know, um, everybody who uses that facility appreciates his work, but I had the, the, the first time I was, um, fortunate to see Kat in action and most people, you know, she comes and talks about fires, but a few months ago, we were dealing with flooding and she's also deals with those. And we also throughout COVID, she was dealing with getting PPEs and all kinds of organizations, stuff like that for the, the COVID, uh, pandemic. And we are truly fortunate in Navajo County to have Kat. Um, she is a calm in a storm. Um, I saw that in the cedar fire, like the chief talked about, uh, my office was, was there in Navajo County and all of a sudden the cedar fire jumped a line and things just got out of hand. And so that building became command central for at least a day or two. And so I was able to pop in and out and Kat was just this, she did things so effortlessly that it was remarkable to see. And the reason why was what chief touched on is all of the pre-planning, all of the foundational aspect of dealing with that has already been done. When we go into fire season and when we go into restrictions and when we do those things, they are absolutely, um, based upon scientific evidence and they're done off of research and there's a lot of thought and, and almost every scenario that you can think of, the elected officials and staff have already ran through those and we do it for what's in the best interest of our community and for our people. And one, one statistic that I, I don't think we focus in on enough is we talk about the, the breadth of the wall, wildfire, the wall of fire, the rodeo Cheddis guy, the cedar fire, all of these ones. And I don't know that we lost a life in any of those. And that's remarkable. That's truly remarkable that we have these catastrophic, catastrophic events. I mean, Haiti just flooded yesterday and they had four or six of them dead. And, uh, you know, and, and, and so for, for us to be able to sit back and see that our community members have survived those, it's a testament to what, uh, the emergency preparedness that you are doing tonight. So I want to thank you for that. And I really have to say, the only bad thing about Kat that I've ever, really the only problem I find with her is that she lives in Holbrook. She's a road runner. We can't, she can't be perfect, but other than that, she does a phenomenal job. I want to thank you, Kat.
Don't worry about my house burning. We have a railroad though, so it's a trade-off. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. At this time we'll have a presentation on the City of Sholo American Disabilities Act
Right. Vice Mayor and Council, pleasure to be back up, making our annual, uh, report on the ADA Committee. Um, the ADA Committee came about in, uh, 2018 to help the city better understand how we're serving our populations here, uh, who suffer, um, with ADA considerations. Um, the committee is comprised of both staff and public. Meetings are held quarterly to discuss ongoing efforts made by the city of Sholo. Um, and basically what we do is we review our city projects and our, um, policies to make sure that they reflect, um, what is being mandated by the Americans with Disabilities Act. Um, the, the most obvious thing that we've gotten done this year, uh, this past fiscal year was, um, the instruction and the grand opening of the inclusive playground and the splash pad. And that suits everybody. It's a hundred percent and anybody can go there and play. That was the, um, objective from the get-go and we appreciate the council's dedication to making sure that that project was funded and, uh, came to fruition. And as you can see in that picture there, these are relatively new photos, thanks to Miles and his staff and that awesome drone that was literally floating above this building and was able to zoom in and catch this photo. Everybody that was there that day was following the, uh, no parking and handicap spot. So there were no handicap folks there that day utilizing their spaces. We love seeing that. Uh, we love seeing lots of handicap folks there, but we also love to see it, uh, being utilized properly, that parking. And it is an absolutely wonderful facility. Um, the splash pad, as you can see, it's, it's wet over there and there are kids, uh, getting wet in the beautiful weather that we've been having. That's one of the big things that we've gotten done in the last year for our ADA folks. All right. Also the Meadow Trail Phase Two, also a very recent picture by Drone, um, that was completed this year. We constantly get comments by our public. I get phone calls all the time thanking us, thanking council, thanking staff for these projects where we're considering our ADA folks in the construction of those items. Uh, one notable thing, uh, it came from, um, our mayor, uh, member of our community contacted our mayor and asked staff to procure some parking, uh, along the deuce of clubs for, um, people with wheelchairs and ADA concerns. And so staff contacted the, um, landowner there at the shopping center in front of CVS and we asked him if we could utilize these parking spaces for, um, people with ADA considerations and he'd said yes, straight away. So that will be available for folks this year for our independent state parade. Now it'll be marked off and we'll make sure that, uh, people know what that's for. And it is worth mentioning also, I changed it up here. I don't see it there. The Tim McKay Memorial Park, um, council has, uh, in the budget process for fiscal year 2024, allocated some funding towards the phase, the first phase of the implementation of, of that park. We're very thankful for that and that will also be done considering our ADA citizens and visitors. Um, some of the things, some of the other things that we have going on and some of the future things that we're working on, um, ADOT White Mountain Road connectivity, that's ongoing. We see these crews working at night now. Uh, they just fired back up. Uh, citywide sidewalk connectivity, that's also ongoing. Um, this is an interesting one, city parks and facilities, uh, restroom room construction near the old pavilions to the south of the old pavilion. That one should be ready relatively soon to open to the public and that will be, um, that was a complete reconstruction. They knocked that guy down and, um, made a new one and they're all ADA, uh, compliant. Um, we are going to remodel the senior and Ponderosa Field Restrooms and also the restrooms at the city campus gym. And these are, will be done with CDBG and general fund. Those are ongoing. We hope that next year those are all open and we can report back to you that those are all online. And then also council in the upcoming budget has approved, uh, to convert existing, uh, on-deck restrooms at the aquatic center into a family ADA compliant restroom with a shower. That's a, that's going to be a huge help. Um, there've been lots of folks who've asked for something like that and, um, we appreciate council's willingness to on those kinds of projects. And that's my report. If there are any questions or comments.
Have any questions? Thank you, Jay, for your work on this.
Thank you.
Hey, Jay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have a proclamation by the mayor proclaiming June 4th through June 10th, 2023 as Cougar Academic Athlon Team Week. Uh, we're happy to have them here tonight. Considerate. Consideration of acceptance of the Frontier Park Parking Lot Expansion. Consideration amendments of the Sholo City Council meetings for March 21st and May 23rd. Is there any items that anybody would like to move? Take a motion, consent calendar?
I'll move.
Councilman Adams, are those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Sense, motion carries. This time, I'll ask the city clerk to read the proclamation.
Vice Mayor and Council, whereas the Sholo High School Academic Decathlon Team competed in a series of 10 academic tests and demonstrations in the subjects of art, economics, essay, interview, literature, mathematics, music, science, social science, speech, and an overall super quiz relay revolving around this year's theme of the American Revolution and the New Nation. And whereas on the weekend of March 10th and 11th, 2023, the team won the Division 3A State Championship. And whereas the City of Sholo recognizes the learning, growth, and academic excellence among the team. And whereas the City of Sholo recognizes the dedication of the students, their parents, the coaching staff, the administration, the student body, and the community. Now therefore, Connie Kukavas, Vice Mayor on behalf of the Sholo City Council, does hereby proclaim June 4th through the 10th, 2023, as Cougar Academic Decathlon Team Week in the City of Sholo and urges all citizens in the community to acknowledge this tremendous achievement. Thank you.
This time, we have a presentation for members of the team. If we could have the coaches come forward, please. Would Butler say a word, key words for us and let us know what this program's about?
Hello, my name is Tanya Butler. Thank you so much for, um, having us here. We appreciate your support, um, in this. Um, I've been coaching seven years, eight years now for the acaded team. And for the past three years, we have, uh, taken the 3A state championship, uh, the past three years. And we've also been able to go to our national competition. Um, this year, we placed seventh at our national competition, um, and took home some medals. Behind me, we have three of our team members, um, with Summer being here. Some of the team members couldn't make it, um, but I will turn the time over to our president. Of the things that we did.
Things that we did?
Yeah, go for it.
We do many other things. Um, mainly, we work competitively together. We spend a lot of time together, it means, so we have a lot of fun as a group. You may have noticed giggling in the back. It is, um, because of our friend Terry here. Um, Anaya stole him from a college campus, um, and proceeded to drop him in a hotel sink and break the sink. So we're giggling in back there because he dropped it on his toe.
That was a bad choice.
Um, for the most part, though, we just spend a lot of time studying together and working together in order to all better ourselves. I love the group, even though I'm, I just graduated, so I'm leaving. Um, I love the group because we often, it becomes much more of a family than one could think. Like, there are people who I never thought I would really get along with until I was in acaded with them. And we just spent so much time together and had so much fun. Doing something even so basic as studying was a lot of fun for us together as a group. Or, um, issues with stolen rocks.
Do you have any questions about acaded?
Well, I was told that one of the individuals took second at Nationals in literature. Is that correct? Who was that individual and?
Um, Aubrey Wilson.
What did she, what, what was it that she did to take, uh, to take second at Nationals? Like, did she have to write a piece and present it or what? Tell us about that.
The, the literature piece is, is actually a 50-question test. Um, and they had 25 minutes to complete that test. And she scored second in the nation. So, big achievement for her. Um, she also was our highest scoring student, um, at regionals. And this is black, she has, uh, the coach is black for that. Um, and some of the trophies that we have, that's our 3A state trophy. Uh, we did win gold in our super quiz this year at regionals. Um, and we took home 29 medal. It was amazing. Yeah. Just medal after medal. So she has some of them on. I tell them, don't hold them, let them jingle, let them make noise. That's, that's, um, that's an honor for them to have those. So, um, we appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Appreciate Coach Tanya, Jerry. Oh, that this is not just for night thing.
Thank you.
We have something for a sweatshirt each of you. Anora Bernier. Grace Lewis. Congratulations. Tom Hobbs. Jeremiah Wall. Tom Dale. Penny Gegenheimer. Nia Valalaba. Travis Ryan. Coaches Tanya Butler and Jerry. Again, congratulations. Um, we appreciate you, um, representing the City of Sholo and.
Um, real quick, I just want to say, um, thank you to, to, to Mr. and Mrs. Butler. Um, I, in my former life, I had a, a job on the school board. And I heard last year that, uh, that Mr. and Mrs. Butler might be leaving our district and it caused my heart to sink. Um, the reason why is because, um, I'm also the father to the most recent valedictorian for the Sholo Unified School District. And so I'll take a time to, to brag on him. He's a very smart, very competent, very, uh, wonderful student. And he still talks about how Mrs. Butler's freshman English class taught him how to write. And so as a father, I want to thank you for being a phenomenal educator. Um, as a member of the community, I want to thank you and Jerry for staying with our district and producing these kind of results because, you know, I, I know that you are, you know, lifelong residents of Sholo. Um, I think it's phenomenal when we have individuals such as yourselves who want to stay here and want to teach and impact the lives of our students. And so thank you for staying and thank you for putting your heart and soul into these kids because it, it, it pays huge dividends. I am a beneficiary of your hard work. So thank you both. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item on the agenda is all business. We have consideration of award of construction contract for airport hangar infrastructure improvements. I'm turning the time to.
Vice Mayor and Council. Uh, the City of Sholo solicited bids for infrastructure improvements at the South Hangar area at Sholo Regional Airport. The purpose of the project was to expand this area to accommodate demand for additional hangars. The infrastructure will serve 10 new hangars ranging in size from 60 by 65 feet to 75 by 65 feet. The improvements include grading and paving for taxi lanes, water, sewer, and electrical services, and a sewer lift station. The upfront construction costs will be paid by Big Dog Development in exchange for ground lease credits. Project was designed by City of Sholo Engineering Department and was publicly bid according to statutory requirements with the following results. A single bid was received from Midstate Asphalt for $496,128.15. The single bid was well within the expected cost because the city has not worked with this contractor in the past. Staff made additional reference checks. Several very favorable responses were received. Staff recommends awarding the contract for the airport hangar infrastructure improvements. City of Sholo Project Number A 1723 2.0 to Midstate Asphalt in an amount not to exceed $496,128.15. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Bill, have, have we dealt with Mid, Midstate before?
No, sir.
This is the very first time. What kind of background do we have on them, do you know?
They are out of Payson. He's fairly new to his A general contractor license. I did, I called five references. I heard back from four and all of them gave me very glowing recommendations. Actually, they, they had a lot of good things to say about this company. Also, uh, the underground sub is a local person, Reed Johnson. I can't remember what his company's name. Stratton Electric is doing the electric. So we do have a strong local presence on the team.
Well, yeah. So even with him coming in, he is definitely putting some local people into some jobs and stuff like that. And are they the only ones that's going to be able to keep an eye on them to make sure everything's right? Or we're going to have inspectors out there quite a bit?
City will provide inspection services for that.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Any other comments or questions?
I'll move to award the bid for the airport hangar infrastructure improvement. City of Sholo Project Number A 1723 2.0 to Midstate Asphalt in an amount not to exceed $496,128.15.
I have a motion by Councilman Clark and a second by Councilman Adams. One favor. Aye. Me in dissent. See none, so the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is new business. Um, consideration of ordinance number 2023-03, extending and increasing the corporate limits of Sholo, Navajo County, State of Arizona by annexing thereto certain territory. City Limits of the City of Sholo.
Vice Mayor and Council, staff was recently approached by the owner of a parcel located directly south of the Sholo City Limits and west of the Sholo Lake requesting to explore the possibility of annexing property into the City of Sholo in order to facilitate development of several properties. This owner wishes to develop a master plan subdivision. While the majority of the property to be developed lies within the Sholo City Limits, one parcel is located outside the Sholo City Limits and is located in the Pine Top Lakeside Town Limit. This results in several issues including utilities, access, police protection, um, and building permits and inspections. After discussion with the property owner, staff approached the town of Pine Top Lakeside and discussed the possibility of de-annexing this parcel from the Pine Top Lakeside into the Sholo City Limit. Also discussed was the possibility of including three adjacent parcels, which are owned by the City of Sholo, but are also in the Pine Top City Limit. Two of these parcels are located under the Sholo Lake. Third parcel is in the site of the former, former Phelps Dodge Pumping Station. The total area of the four parcels is approximately 19 acres. The legislature has provided a procedure for de-annexation of land from one municipality to another. Procedure is outlined in Arizona Revise Statute 9, um, 9-471.02. At the regular meeting on May 18th, 2023, the town of Pine Top Lakeside approved the ordinance number 23-463 for the de-annexation of the subject properties. From the town of Pine Top Lakeside to the City of Sholo with the condition that the town of Pine Top Lakeside receive any construction sales tax, permit fees if any residences are ever constructed. One, council adopts the ordinance number 2023-3. Both ordinances will be sent to Navajo County for action by the Board of Supervisors. Following the approval by the Board of Supervisors, this action will be considered final. Subject properties will, would then be incorporated into the City of Sholo.
Any comments or questions? By unanimous consent, we'll ask the city clerk to read ordinance number 03.
Vice Mayor, City of Sholo Ordinance Number 2023-03, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Sholo, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Sholo, Navajo County, State of Arizona, by annexing thereto certain territory consisting of approximately 19.5 acres to just of the existing city of Sholo, the Pine Top Lakeside contingent upon de-annexation of said territory by the town of Pine Top Lakeside and approval by the Navajo County Board of Supervisors pursuant to the provisions of ARS 9-471-03.
Move to, can I make a motion? Move to adopt the ordinance number 2023-03.
Someone, and a second by Manhattan. Are those in favor? The motion. Next item on the agenda is consideration of Resolution R 2023-11, adopting tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitation for fiscal year ending.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Evening, Vice Mayor and Council members. Uh, tonight I have a somewhat brief presentation. I guess it's brief depending on who you talk to. Talk to me, it's brief. Others might think it's long. It's, uh, just an overview of the, a lot of the information and data that we've been working to put together since January. That's a combined effort with staff and council and takes a lot of time and we want to make sure we get it right. And I will say at the, at the start that we did bring some changes to the council, um, at the second meeting in May, changes to the manager's recommended budget. All those changes have been placed in here that were, uh, shared with the council at that meeting. And we don't have any additional budget at this time. So just as a refresher to the public, uh, we try to keep our process transparent. We offer multiple opportunities for the community to get involved. They can get forms online, send them into staff, and we can work their ideas into the budget process and try to get those funded. We have a couple of town hall meetings. And of course, all of our study sessions are open to the public as well. And our draft budget can be found online and the tentative budget will be posted online as well. And we set forth to start working on the budget. Uh, these are the goals and priorities that the council has set forth. Preserve, maintain infrastructure, uh, enhance quality of life, community and economic development, and then strong support for our organization. So those are the main factors that are considered when we work on putting the budget together. This chart shows our adopted budget versus what we've actually spent with the history going back to 2019. Uh, in the blue is the actual budget that's adopted. And then the red is the actual expenditure. So you can see we have a history of being conservative in our spending. We do plan for some projects like grant-type projects where we may not get funding. And in that case, the spending's going to be less. Or if we have projects that get partially complete or get pushed to the next year, then that, uh, well, that, that will cause us to spend less than the adopted budget amount. Well, this year, fiscal year 24, our proposed budget amount is approximately 135 million. This chart shows, um, pie chart shows the percentages of where the revenues come from. We have a beginning fund balance of unspent funds or projects that didn't get completed. That's 33.6%. Our operating revenues, which is our revenues that are generated throughout the year at 53.1%. And then a couple other minor impacts, the inter-fund transfers and other financing. For a little more detail on the revenues, uh, the beginning fund balance, which was, uh, 33% is 50 million. Other financing sources, $9 million. That's in our unanticipated line item for grants or project money that comes to the city unexpectedly that we, um, it gives us an opportunity to accept those funds and it kind of acts as a placeholder. Having our fund transfers and then operating revenues of 80.4 million. This is a breakdown of the 80.4 million. 34% of that's intergovernmental. A large component of that is grant money, uh, local taxes, which is 18.8%. State shared revenues, uh, utility fees, and miscellaneous round out the top five for sources on revenues. Utility fees, we expect to generate revenues of five point one million in the water and three point two million in the wastewater. As a reminder, we did not accept the CPI adjustment rate for water this year. We tried to provide some relief to our residents. The water fund is doing okay, so we basically took a one-year relief from the CPI adjustment, but there was still a CPI adjustment for wastewater. Then in sanitation with the inflation rate and the fuel index is high this year for the contract with waste management, our regular and recycle will increase from seventeen fifty to nineteen twenty-five. And then if you have an additional cart, that'll go from seven dollars twenty-five cents to eight dollars. Local sales tax, we remain conservative in our budgeting. Last several years, we've budgeted at fourteen million. This year, we bumped it up to fourteen point four. Still very conservative. You can see in fiscal year twenty-one, we generated seventeen point one six million. And last year, fiscal year twenty-two, eighteen point five million. And this year, our estimates very similar to last year at this point. We have one month, one or two months to go and we expect to be right in that same neighborhood. So conservative budgeting on the revenue side for sales tax in the event that the economy does make a change and we want to be prepared to accommodate any changes that state shared revenues are up this year. As with, as what we have done in the past, we usually budget ninety-five percent. So when we get the estimates from the state, we multiply that by ninety-five percent and then we budget a reduced amount and they're pretty accurate with their estimates. So in doing so, we save a little room for any potential errors or things that may have been missed over time and prepare ourselves for the unexpected. This is a breakdown of the intergovernmental that I spoke about earlier. You can see a large component of this is grant revenue for the Scott Ranch Road project. This is a project that's been applied for funds for the, through the RACE grant, which we have been doing for the last nine to ten years. We've, we feel like our application is about as good as it can be. It's competitive. It's made it to the final stages. It just comes down to the fact that there may be five hundred qualifying applications and only enough money to give to a hundred applications. So you can have, you can do everything you can do, but you still have to compete in the end and we make it to the end of the road the last two or three years. So we're hoping this year that we'll be able to get that. The other item there is the congressional funding and these two items are the main reason for a significant increase compared to last year's budget of ninety-eight million. You add those two together, you're coming up with a little over thirty-three million and, and we're about thirty-four, thirty-five million over where we were last year. Questions on our intergovernmental? The breakdown of our, oh yes.
Can you explain a little bit further on the Scott Ranch Road? Seeing as far as twenty putting it in this year?
Yeah, so in years past, for the grant process, we've only been required to provide a match in our budget. This year, we're actually providing, we're showing that we're going to receive that revenue and then we have to show a contingency that we could address any shortcomings in the project. Like if the project runs over, then we'll have funding available to address those project overruns. So just a little bit different process from what they've required in the years. As with any municipal or government or service agency, employees make up a large component of the budget. This year, we're presenting to the council one hundred and eighty-one point seven full-time equivalent employees. And I won't go through all these individually, but we are, we had a couple of decreases in positions that were contingent upon adding additional partners. Then we've had some additions, but we're going to be moving up to one hundred and eighty-one point seven full-time equivalents for fiscal year twenty-four. We do have a slight rate increase for our Arizona state retirement going from twelve point one seven percent to twelve point two nine. And then in our PSPRS, since our fund status improved significantly over the last five years, we're reducing our contribution rate from thirty-nine percent or thirty-nine point nine six to thirty, which is still about double what the recommended rate is. But we feel this will allow us to stay ahead of any changes and keep our funded status moving. This is just a chart showing the trend since twenty fifteen. Our total number of full-time equivalent. And then a breakdown of our full-time by service area. Capital and contingencies, seventy-two point four million. As part of preserving, maintaining our infrastructure, we, we want to spend money on projects either making repairs or expanding to take care of what we have. And that's why we like to see our capital where it's at. And you'll notice in the streets, budget the thirty-nine million, that does include twenty-four for Scott Ranch Road. About three or four years ago, we received a request from the council to increase our operating reserves. We had been maintaining a two-month operating reserve for the different funds, the two enterprise funds and then the general fund. And now we're happy to report that this year, for the first time, we've, we're able to get three months operating reserves for all three. Feel like we're in a good position there. And then we did add additional funds to a future water treatment plant. So in the event that we do decide to do a surface water treatment, we'll have two point three million set aside for that. This is a breakdown of expenditures by service area. Public Works, forty-three percent, general government, twenty-five, utilities, eighteen point one, public safety, nine point two. And this is a breakdown, further breakdown of the general fund, lease nineteen point nine, general operations, twenty-five point one, facilities, nine percent, and then our capital fund at twenty-seven. So tonight we'll need adoption of resolution R twenty twenty-three dash eleven from the council, adopting the tentative budget. And the budget will be advertised in the paper for a couple of weeks and then we'll have our final budget adoption on June twentieth. And that will include a public hearing on the budget and the tax levy for the streetlight improvement district. And then a secondary property tax levy will be presented to the council for adoption on July eighteenth. And just as a reminder to the council, once the tentative budget is set, then we can't increase the budget going forward. We can make changes, we can reduce, but we can't. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
It's not a question. It's just a thank you for you and Carrie for all the work you've done for us for this budget. And I want to thank staff and city manager and all the division heads for coming together. I know it's a, it's a hassle to come and figure out what you're going to do, how you're going to do it, how many employees to add, how many to take away, all kinds of different things. So the budget I think you brought to the council has been a great budget and I really liked that first slide where we never, never have spent over our budget. So I appreciate that very, very much. Thank you.
Move to award the contract for professional the right one. You know, adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash eleven, adopt tentative budget and establish for fiscal year hundred and thirty-five million, hundred ninety-eight dollars, eight
And by Man Judd, second. None, none, very also, Justin. Consideration of award a contract for professional audit.
Thank you. In April of twenty twenty-three, staff issued a request for proposals for professional audit services. The RFP was sent to six CPA firms in Arizona or that work in Arizona. All firms are members of the Government Finance Officers Association of Arizona. Three of the six CPA firms submitted proposals to conduct the annual audit. After evaluating each proposal and contacting references, the committee recommends that the city offer a contract to the firm of Hinton Burdick. Committee believes that Hinton Burdick can conduct the audit in a timely and professional manner and at a reasonable price. Hinton Burdick has performed the annual audit since fiscal year two thousand nine and is very familiar with the city's systems and processes and the amount of work it takes to complete the audit. Additionally, the committee feels that this firm's extensive municipal accounting experience, combined with its demonstrated technical expertise, make it the best overall candidate to perform the city's audit. Hinton Burdick also conducts annual audits for several, several other White Mountain municipalities. City's standard form professional services agreement will be used for these audit services.
Counsel?
With this, the companies we've used in the past.
What was the amount of increase?
So these are typically like a CPI adjustment each year. So their first year is going to be very similar to what we just stayed in year twenty-two, CPI adjustment.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move to award the contract to professional audit service for a term of five years to Hinton Burdick CPA and advisory to conduct the city annual, annual audit in a cost of a hundred, no, fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three in an annual increase of outlet for their per proposal within options of five additional years.
Second. This time, the city council will recess into a special meeting for the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District Board of Tentative Year. Call to order, the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District Board Special Meeting. Call shows that all board members are present except for H, board member Lee. Next item is consideration of resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash oh one, adopting the tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitation for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. So for tonight's tentative budget for the Community Facilities District, I have prepared a presentation just to go through some of the data so the board is familiar with the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And the tentative budget as it stands today, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred eighty dollars. So the special district was formed by the property owners of the district back in two thousand five. It's a separate unit of government, separate from the city of Cholo. The debt issued was required to be covered by the district's assessed value. And the benefit of that debt was for the district to make improvements to their So there were two separate bonds issued, a special assessment bond and a general obligation bond. The general obligation bond or the GO bond was paid in full back in twenty eighteen, so there's no additional tax on their property tax notices for these properties. That was taken care of in twenty eighteen. There still is an assessment in place. The original assessment bond amount was two million and fourteen thousand dollars. The annual debt service that is paid by the CFD is a hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. There are two hundred and twenty-seven parcels in the CFD and the Cholo Bluff Development, the developer owns a hundred and twenty-seven parcels, which is fifty-six percent. Currently, we have an unbudgeted reserve of two hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. And as of our latest payment, we'll owe still about a million dollars in debt service, which is if we continue to make the normal payments, which is required still for us. Twenty thirty-one is when that will be. We have a beginning fund balance of two hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. And then assessment billing annually is a hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. There are two billings that are sent out annually, semi-annually, June is a principal and interest bill and in December is interest only. So tonight we just need to count the board to adopt the resolution, accepting the tentative budget. And then we'll have a final budget adoption hearing in June. I'm available for any questions.
I move to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash oh one, adopting a tentative budget and establishing expenditure limitation for fiscal year twenty twenty-four at a hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars.
And also, second. By board member Adam. We'll have duration of minutes of the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District Board Meeting, Special Meeting of twenty
Move.
Board member also. Call those in favor. carries unanimously. Time I'll adjourn. Board meeting of the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District. Call the meeting back to order for the Cholo City Council. Maria, current events. Current events by council members.
Excited, it's summertime and getting ready for the Fourth of July. Lot of fun stuff going on.
Uh, wait. Wow. I just think all the, the community members and the amazing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to offer our condolences to Supervisor Seymour for, and his family for the loss of his mother this past week and just let him know that our prayers is for him and his family. On the same hand, as Councilman Judd had just said, I want to thank the Fisher Mans for all the flags that they put out there on the sixty and two sixty and also our local VFW ninety-nine oh seven for placing flags on all our cemeteries here in Cholo and also out in Pine Dale and Clay Springs. It was a privilege and an honor to, to attend the memorial celebration at Cholo Cemetery. Good turnout, a lot of people and a good speaker and it just, it warms your heart to see that people still remember the lives that were lost for us to have the freedoms that we do have. And last but not least, just want to let you, the farmer's market is still going every Saturday from now until September from nine AM to one PM at the festival marketplace downtown Cholo by where the statues are. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Just say that I too would like to thank your flags and honoring those that serving country. Also like to congratulate all the graduates in the area. Done and can't know that he was a great accomplishment. Questions on that?
Mayor and council. So this week for Public Works Cruises, a busy week. It's our project clean sweep. This ends on Saturday, so you have till Saturday to haul debris for free to the Lone Pine Transfer Station. Transfer Station AM to take your current Sholo utility bill or some. Cruises will be picking up bulk trash all this week that meet the requirements for that. So busy crack sitting and patching and cleaning things up, so it's a busy week. I would just hope to have peace with them as they try to get to your house and get it all. It's Friday and Saturday, June ninth and tenth is Sholo days at Frontier Field. So they're having live music, arts and crafts, game booths, food. urge you to come out, enjoy that. There's also this weekend, the Arizona Collectibles and Firearms Gun Show at the city campus gym. The admission is eight dollars a day or dollars for the weekend hours on Saturday night. Also have our weekly farmer's market that continues through September twenty-third from nine AM to one PM at the Festival Marketplace. The vendors selling produce, food products, art. There's a lot to do this. Distant Public Works Projects, we got still work going on on Fifth and Sixth Place on the sewer line replacement. Construction has started. You probably noticed on the Eleventh Street and Hall Bridge, that's going to be blocked off. We'd ask you to use an alternate route through there of a different way. It's just going to be for a few weeks. And we completed the paving on Wes McNeil. The pushing up. A dot is still working, some of the, I notice them at night. Ask for patience as we get.
And scheduling meetings, do we? We need. That being said, during this meeting.